Um, I would like to call the meeting to order. This is the organizational meeting for the Garfield Heights Board of Education, January eleventh, twenty twenty-one. Call to order and roll call, please.
This is Daniels. Ms. King? Ms. King?
Here.
Ms. Thomas?
Here.
Mr. Jubey. Mrs. Kitson.
Here. And if we could have, before we adopt the agenda, a moment of silence. We've had some sad do's in the Garfield Heights School District, and I'm sure there's a lot of other things we need to take a moment and reflect on. So if we give a moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States and to the Republic for which it stands.
With liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. Adoption of the agenda. If I could have a motion in a second, please.
So moved. Second.
All right, any discussion, questions? Roll call, please.
This is Daniels.
Yes.
Ms. King?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Mrs. Kitson?
Yes. All right. And now we go on to the purpose of the meeting, which is nominations for our Board President and nominations for our Vice President. And if we could start with nominations for Board President? I'd like to nominate Nichelle Daniels, Nichelle Daniels for Board President. And we would need a second on that?
Second.
You don't need a second, you just do a motion and a second, Mrs. Kitson, just to close the nominations, if there's no other nominations.
Okay. So are there any other nominations on the floor? No? Okay, now if we could have a if we could close nominations?
Need a motion and a second.
Motion and the second.
I make a motion to close nominations for President for the twenty twenty-one year.
Second. All right. Any discussion? Right. Roll call, please.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. King?
Yes.
Mrs. Daniels?
Yes.
Mrs. Kitson?
Yes. And congratulations, Ms. Daniels. I will send this over to you for the oath of office, and you can take over the meeting.
Thank you.
So we need to do the oath of office, Mrs. Daniels. So if you would repeat after me. I state your name.
I'm Nichelle Daniels.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Ohio.
And the Constitution of the State of Ohio.
And that I will faithfully and impartially discharge my duties.
And I will faithfully and impartially discharge my duties.
As President for the said Garfield Heights City School District.
As President of the City of Garfield Heights School District.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
And in accordance with the laws now in effect.
And in accordance to the laws now in effect.
Until my successor is chosen and qualified.
Until my successor is chosen and qualified.
Congratulations, Madam President.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, guys. I would just like to thank my Board of Education members for entrusting me with this duty of being the President of our Board of Education. It is honored to sit here with you guys and lead with you guys. So I look forward to a successful year in leading the school district into success. So, um, thank you. So do I move forward with the nominations?
Yes.
For Vice President? Okay, so now we will move forward with the nominations for the Board of Education Vice President. Do you have any nominations? I will actually like to nominate, um, Milette King as for Vice President of the Board of Education.
And I'll second that.
Will there be any other nominations? And that there is no other nominations, we can close the nominations at this time? Will you take roll call out?
We need a motion and a second to close.
So in that is, in, in that is closed, can we have a motion?
Second.
Roll call.
Mrs. Kitson?
Yes.
Ms. King?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yeah.
Mrs. Daniels?
Yes.
Okay.
Congratulations, Ms. Tucker.
Right. Ms. King, um, we now-
Sorry, Ms. King.
It's okay. We're not going to do the oath of office for the Vice President. I state your name.
I'm Milette King.
Do solemnly swear.
Solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Ohio.
And the Constitution of the State of Ohio.
And that I will faithfully and impartially discharge my duties as Vice President.
And I will faithfully and impartially depart my duties of Vice President.
For the said Garfield Heights City School District.
For the City of Garfield Heights School, City School District.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
And in accordance with the laws now in effect.
In accordance with the laws now in effect.
Until my successor is chosen and qualified.
Until my successor is chosen and qualified.
Congratulations, Madam Vice President.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Working with everyone.
As we move forward, our next agenda item on today's agenda is two thousand twenty-one board meeting schedule. Are we, um, I'm sorry, I'm looking at this on our view. Are we posting, are we going to be posting up the agenda for the audience to see or just visually?
Um, I'm not sure. We can put it up there if you'd like. Chris, do we want to share the board doc agenda? Do you want me to?
Yeah, I thought, I thought that they were able to see it, but I guess we have to publish the link on the website. I'm sorry, this is the first meeting.
I mean, we're going forward, I just thought that we-
Yeah, well, yeah, absolutely, Ms. Daniels. I'm sorry, what we'll do is, and again, first time, sorry. We'll, what we'll, what we'll do is we'll publish the link for the next meeting. Uh, so, so the public can click on the public side of board docs. Technically, they can go in right now and view it, uh, but you know, they'd need a link to make it easier for them, so. Uh, for the public who's out there, if you look under the staff tab on our website, it does say board docs, and I believe you're able to see the public side. So.
Hey, real quick, um, I'm just trying to share the live stream, and I'm not able to find it straight through the district YouTube page, so if I can't find it, I'm sure we probably don't have-
We, we published it, republished the link on the front of our website, Ms. Thomas. It had to go through my YouTube page, which is, which is a public Garfield Heights City Schools page. Uh, only reason for that, again, uh, we, we, we had a, we, we had to move things around to make sure we were able to do it. So if you, if you click on, uh, join us here under the district news, GHCS Board of Education Organizational Meeting on Garfield Heights City Schools dot com.
Got it.
You're, you're able to view it.
Okay, perfect, got it, thank you.
So moving forward with our meeting, um, board meeting, um, our next agenda item is to establish and approve the board meeting schedule for twenty twenty-one.
There, Mrs. Daniels, there's two dates that we need to, um, look at with the board. That being because, uh, normally our regular meeting dates are the third Monday of the month. But, uh, for January and February, those two days are holidays. So we're going to need to, um, do something with, uh, those two days, and if we can establish those days now, we can put that out there on our calendar. In the past, we've always just, uh, moved it to the, the Tuesday after the Monday, but that's up the subject usually to, uh, the board schedule, board member's schedule.
I have no objection to us moving it to the Tuesday, uh, which will be, um, which will set our January meeting, um, for January nineteenth. And then that will set our February meeting, um, to February sixteenth. Is there, um, any objection or discussion?
My only discussion is, we probably should pass the resolution saying we are going to meet on the third Monday of the month at six P M. And then just have those two dates that they are, are the exception dates. Is that correct?
Well, if, since we usually just publish the dates in the resolution itself in the motion, which is the third Monday, those dates will be filled in, and so you'll have a actual dates
Okay.
in the, in the meeting minutes.
Because I'm just looking, I'm using board docs for the first time, too.
Right.
I'm not seeing the complete resolution with dates, and I might not be looking at it correctly, so. I only see the twenty twenty-one board meeting and schedule, so that's why I wanted to double check.
Click on the, um, the detailed one.
Okay.
Did you log in?
I'm in, yeah, I'm in.
Check on the detailed one. In the middle of the tab.
I'll check. So you could continue, I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah.
Detailed agenda.
All you- But I am seeing on my side dates. I don't, I, I am seeing dates.
And the arms-
Okay, got it, got it.
Same thing.
We are good.
Dates.
Okay, and, and the actual minutes will show the, uh, the dates in there.
But they're filled in, got it. I see it now, thank you.
Okay.
So it's the January nineteenth and February sixteenth?
Yes.
And then all other dates will be the-
Third Monday.
Third Monday of the month at six P M.
Yes.
With the exception of January and February, as indicated.
That is correct.
There are motions except.
I make a motion to accept.
Second.
Roll call. Is there a discussion? Roll call first and then discussion, correct?
Uh, no, discussion first and roll call. And either way, it doesn't. Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. King?
Yes.
Mrs. Kitson?
Yes.
Mrs. Daniels?
Yes. Item number three point one on the agenda was passed, has been passed. Moving forward with general business, um, next item on the agenda is the service fund four point one. Is there a motion? If that's to establish board member service fund and the amount not to exceed twenty thousand dollars for twenty twenty-one.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. King?
Yes.
Mrs. Kitson?
Yes.
Mrs. Daniels?
Yes. That was passed. Would have voted four one, I mean, four, zero, thank you. The next item on the agenda is a four point two appointment of one board member as delegate to the Ohio and National School Board Association's Conventions for twenty twenty with remaining board members to serve as alternate delegates. Board members to serve as the delegate to the Ohio and National Board Association's Conventions for two thousand um, twenty-one. Um, is there anyone that would like to be considered for, um, appointment of these, um, as delegate for the Ohio and the National School Board Association? I would, I would, um, like to be considered. For Ohio or the national. Is, it's one or the other? Or is it combined?
Usually one and the same.
Okay, it's one and the same?
Yes.
Okay. Oh, I would like to, um, I would like to, um, appoint Milette King, um, as the board member, the delegate for Garfield Heights City School District for both the Ohio and National School Board Association. Can I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Mrs. Kitson?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. King?
Yes.
Mrs. Daniels?
Yes. That was passed by majority. On to the next is, um, the next item on our agenda this afternoon is the Board President's Appointment of Representatives and Liaisons. And, um, our first one is the liaison for student activities. I would like to recommend that Ashley Thomas continues to serve, um, on that committee. Uh, we also have the Legislative Liaison, and, um, I would like to appoint, um, myself to serve as the Legislative Liaison, and then we have the city liaison, and I would like to, um, appoint, um, Milette King to serve there. And the policy liaison, I would like to appoint, um, board member Jubey, and myself to serve there, and then we have one appointment that is not listed, but the CBC, um, committee is not on, um, this outlined agenda, and I would like for us to continue to hold that committee, and I would like to appoint Ms. Kitson. Is there any discussion as it relates to appointments?
Just one thing with CBCC, it's not really a committee, um, it's an appointment to a three-year term, so I'll be starting my second of three years as, um, board member, so. Um, usually, I'm not quite sure why it always showed up as a committee, but it's, it's an actual appointment to serve on this, on that school board. So, uh, just to clarify that.
So with that being said, um, and just to, um, equitably, um, ensure that all board members are serving on one of our committees, um, as stands. Will it be okay if I appoint you, um, at this time to serve as the Legislative Liaison, Ms. Kitson?
Oh, absolutely, yeah, I can, I can get the legislative news and present it, sure.
So just to clarify, to be Ms. Thomas for student activities, Ms. Kitson, um, Legislative Liaison, Ms. King, the city liaison, and Mr. Jubey and myself, policy. Can I get a motion to accept?
So moved.
The appointments.
Second.
Roll call.
Mrs. Kitson?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. King?
Yes.
Mrs. Daniels?
Yes.
Let the, let the record reflect that that was passed, um, by a vote, um, of four to zero. Thank you, guys. The next item of agenda is treasurer investments, and it's the approval to authorize the treasurer to make investments. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call. Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. King?
Yes.
Mrs. Daniels?
Yes. That was passed by a vote of four to zero. The next, um, item on the agenda today is our tax budget hearing. Out.
Yes, um, I don't know if, uh, Mr. Hanky can, uh, let me share a screen here. Am I allowed to do that?
Yeah, yeah, I, I believe we, we coordinated that with Mrs. Miller, you should be able to share, let me see, if you can do it, let me know.
Okay, we're going to share here, um, and what I'm showing right now is the alternative tax budget, um, and we're going to be holding the hearing. But I wanted to review the tax budget with the board and go over the different schedules, um, just to follow up, the tax budget is a mechanism whereby we tell the county fiscal officer and, and throughout the state, it's a, um, legislative, uh, Ohio Revised Code requirement. This document tells the county fiscal officer that they need to levy all of our taxes, the property taxes, and this is a budget of need. So what we do in Schedule One here is we're showing all of our levies and the millage rates that we want them to, uh, collect and authorizing them to collect, so we're showing a need here for them to collect all of the monies, um, that has been voted upon through the maximum rate authorized. So that is Schedule One. Schedule Two is just a statement of fund activity, it's an additional requirement to show fund activity for all of the funds of the school district. Um, these are just estimates as we go out to fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two, these are estimates for that year, and these amounts here are based on, um, my estimates based on past history, so there's really, they're just, like I said, they're a year out, so they're really just estimates. Uh, Schedule Three is any unvoted general obligation debt, of which we have none. Schedule Four is our voted debt. And what we see here are three improvement bonds, um, that we have, uh, we've had three refunded issues. What it's showing is the principal, and then the amounts required to meet the budget, year principal and interest payments. This is what we're telling, um, the county fiscal officer is that we need four point four million to be collected and pay what is coming due in calendar year two thousand twenty-two. So we need him or her to assess the necessary millage so that we can pay off these bonds, and that's why we say they're voted bonds. And the public has voted to, um, be assessed the appropriate amount of taxes so that we can pay off what's coming due in that year, and then tax anticipation, anticipation notes, um, of which we have none. Um, so basically what this document does, and the biggest schedule is, once again, the Schedule One here, is this is the schedule that's telling the county fiscal officer to assess the maximum authorized millage rate for each of these areas of taxes and the amount we're requested of the budget commission. But I need to caution is that, um, due to House Bill nine twenty, we don't really collect the full maximum authorized rate, especially for the current expense, we collect what they call the, um, the different assessed rate, it's called the effective rate due to House Bill nine twenty. And then for the emergency levies, these rates are subject to a little bit of change as we move forward based on our assessed valuation. Because what we're telling them is to collect what was the authorized dollar amount um, of that levy, that's what the emergency levy, it's not a millage rate, it's a dollar amount, so we're telling them now this is what we need to collect. And then you can see here, the two bond retirements matching up closely with the, uh, what we need to collect to pay off the bonds, and then the permanent improvement, once again, has an effective rate, we don't really collect the full one point five mils, we collect a effective rate. But I like to show the maximum rate authorized and let the county fiscal officer determine what the effective rates are for these. Um, put that in his, uh, in his lap. So I'm just letting them know that we need all of our tax money, and that's what this, uh, tax budget hearing does. Um, and this is what the alternative tax budget does. I like to caution the, the board and everyone else. This is a, a procedural requirement by the Ohio Revised Code. It is something that's a little antiquated in the way it works, because as you could see, this is a calendar year document of which we're in a fiscal year. Um, this is, you know, been put in place for a long time. The more important of the documents has always been the budget and the, the most important is the five-year forecast. All this document is doing is telling the county fiscal officer to collect all the property taxes that are owed to the school district. Any questions on the hearing?
I don't have any.
So, uh, Mrs. Daniels, and we need to approve this so I can send this down to the county fiscal officer. And that's the next-
I get a motion, a motion to approve the tax budget as outlined in the tax budget hearing?
I make a motion to approve Resolution Number twenty twenty-one dash zero one, a resolution to approve the twenty twenty-one tax budget as presented in Exhibit A.
Second.
Roll call.
Ms. King?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Mrs. Kitson?
Yes.
Mrs. Daniels?
Yes. That was passed, um, by a vote of four to zero. I would like to, um, do I have a motion to adjourn the organizational meeting?
So moved. Second. Roll call.
Ms. King?
Yes.
Mrs. Kitson?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Mrs. Daniels?
Yes. By a vote four to zero, the organizational meeting has been adjourned as of twelve twenty-five P M. Thank you.
Um, s- since we're rolling right into the special meeting, Mrs. Daniels, um, I think you just need to call the meeting to order. I don't think you need to call the roll call, I think everybody's here. Again, and then just the motion to adopt the agenda.
Okay. I would like to call to order the, um, January eleventh special board meeting and work session. Can I get a motion to adopt the agenda as presented?
Make a motion to adopt the agenda as presented.
Second. Roll call.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Mrs. Kitson?
Yes.
Ms. King?
Yes.
Mrs. Daniels?
Yes. That was, um, approved by vote four to one, and we are moving on to our first ag- agenda item, which is um, a motion to approve Resolution Number two point, I mean, twenty twenty-one dash zero two, and it is recommended, um, let me see, I'm sorry, trying to get a, just, uh, this is a resolution of the board to extend certain of the F F C R A's provisions until March thirty-first, twenty twenty-one.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion?
Mrs. Daniels, if, if I may, uh, the, the F F C R A is the Family First Coronavirus Relief Act, is a federal law that expired on December thirty-first of twenty twenty. Uh, this law provided protections to employees, including, uh, time off without having to burn sick leave, uh, in, in, in the case of be, of having a COVID infection or having to quarantine, uh, among other things. Uh, working with legal counsel, I, I want to, uh, turn it over to Mr. Patton, uh, uh, to talk about the provisions that, uh, we'd like to extend.
So what we would like to do is, we're proposing to extend the ten, uh, or eighty hours for any, uh, staff member, um, both the, um, teachers' union as well as the O P C union folks, as well in central office, if they were to get, uh, quite quarantined or to test positive for Corona, uh, the, the ten days would be covered under there, we would like to extend that until March thirty-first. Um, that's based on, again, on what Mr. Hanky just stated, uh, recommendations from legal counsel, um, and help support our, uh, staffs going forward for these next few months.
School, school districts generally, um, the E S C did a survey are kind of, um, they're all over the place with this. Uh, in terms of whether or not to extend, uh, we're recommending extension. Um, and then we can also revisit for a further extension if need be prior to March thirty-first. Thank you, Mrs. Daniels.
I have a question, if there is, make sure I'm unmuted, if there is, um, if we're extending this leave for ten days because someone has a exposure to COVID, how do we, I, I hate to say prove that, but is there some sort of documentation from a medical provider to, um, state that someone is positive? I just, I, as a safeguard to the district, I think we need some process in place, and that's just my opinion.
Yes, staff members have been notifying us. Yes, staff members have been notifying us and letting us know when they test positive and showing us different documentation of that.
So as far as quarantining, I mean, if they are not positive, but they have to quarantine for ten days, how do they, how do you determine?
Usually, usually what they're, usually it's been, staff members in the house have tested positive. And then they go on the guidance from the Department of Health as well as the healthcare providers, letting them, informing them to recommend and self quarantine for a period of time.
I understand your question, Mrs. Kitson, about documentation. I'll work with Mr. Patton to make sure we have medical certifications. I think that that will be appropriate for us. However, you know, you, when you're doing things in real time, you know, you do them and then we can ask later for the certifications.
Cause I do see, like, according to the resolution, it does appear as if this is only will be enacted if they're. If they were advised by a medical provider or federal, state, or local organization, so. I assumed that we were getting that, that documentation, you know, from, because in order for this to be effective, it has to be, it seems to be a doctor's board.
Or, or, or from the Board of Health, which isn't a doctor's order, that's what the little wrinkle of this is.
Okay. And then I did notice that, is it customary, is everybody else kind of dropping that item five, number five and six? Because we're not, we're only. We're only enacting one through four. And we've dropped five, item number five through six, so it doesn't apply when someone is caring for a child who's school or place of care is closed. For reasons related to COVID or if they're just experiencing any, any other substantially similar conditions. Specified by the Secretary of Health. So it doesn't seem that they're having, if they're having, if they're symptomatic, it doesn't, they don't qualify anymore, they have to test positive, correct?
Correct, and. There are a number of school districts that are dropping this off completely. There are school districts generally though, and according to legal counsel, just kind of a. This was kind of an anecdotal survey among his clients that they are, they are, they are leaving off both five and six, Ms. Daniels. But, but they are trying to also be mindful of the fact that, you know, there's, there's going to be some infection quarantine, so we have some additional protection for the employee.
But if they did need to take off because their child. May not be able to attend school or a childcare facility, they could still utilize their earned vacation or sick time.
Yep.
Okay.
This is, this is a further protection where they don't have to burn the sick time.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify.
Thank you, is there any other discussion or questions?
You're muted.
We're not including five and six because the resolution appears to include five and six.
Resolution eliminates five and six.
It eliminates five and six.
Section.
I'm looking at, okay, maybe I.
Christine, I'm looking at the same document you are.
Are you confused? Okay, thank you.
And that's five and six listed in there, but if you actually read the, the resolution. One through four. Oh, section one, the beginning of the resolution just explains what the, the F F C R A is. But then when you get down into the resolution. And section one indicates what we're adopting and approving.
I see it.
I see it, but is there a way we can just make it clear, clear that we are not, I don't know, to me it just seems.
Section one.
Right, I mean, I see it, but I see.
A lot of times the whereas is just give you information. But where we get down.
Okay, I see it now, it just didn't stand.
Where we get down to therefore be resolved.
Okay.
I love the legality.
Yeah, so the therefore be resolved, that what goes before it may not. But what's in the therefore be resolved is what we are actually voting on today. So the whereas a lot of times just give you informational and just kind of give you the scope of what.
No, I, I understand, I didn't see the one through four, it, it, it didn't stand out to me. And Mr. Hanky, do we, and Mr. Patton, do we know if other districts within inner ring suburbs, how they're handling this?
Yeah, well, yeah, go ahead, go ahead, and Mr. Patton, you probably have more information than I do, but.
So what it is, is they are, a lot of districts are looking to do this. It is still, they are still working with their boards as well as legal counsel to determine what the course of action and it works best for the districts. So we are still, I think, again, Garfield Heights is a little bit ahead of the game on this. But I think districts are kind of proceeding forward into some type of resolution and some type of adoption of this extension of this program.
Just, Mrs. Kitson, this is somewhat anecdotal, but from the E S C put out a survey for all the districts in the area, multi-county. I'm just kind of looking at, I'm, I'm, I'm just kind of looking at the first ring here. Richmond Heights is extending, South Euclid is extending. Kihauga Heights is not extending. Brooklyn is not extending, Parment is not extending, and Maple is not extending, although I've, you know, again, this might be outdated too. This was last week, things are changing rapidly, so. Those are the only ones who answered the survey thus far. Lots of undecideds too, just in the region.
Is there any other discussion and questions?
If there is no other discussion. I would like to. Ask that there be a motion to approve.
We have a, we have a motion and a second.
Also, we just got to do roll call.
Right. Mrs. Ms. King?
Yes.
Mrs. Kitson?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Mrs. Daniels?
Yes. It's. That has been passed by four one. And we are now moving on to our work session. And our first item is the hybrid model, Mr. Hanky?
Thank you, Ms. Daniels. Last week I met with various constituencies in the COVID task force. In December, we indicated that we would come back into hybrid model, January twenty fifth. I have a presentation for the Board of Education, if I could, I'll share my screen with you. On the things we've come up with. All right, can everybody see the presentation, okay?
Yes, and Mr. Hanky and Ms. Daniels, at twelve forty five, I will have to drop from the call because I have to get back from work, but I will. Take a look at anything I miss.
I, I do apologize, I've been working on this kind of up to the meeting, so I will send this along to the board as well. No problem.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, so today's presentation, we're going to look at the two one two hybrid model. And we're looking, looking at equity in the hybrid model and some safety and sanitation measures and also one other thing at the end, next steps. So we plan to return to in-person learning on January twenty fifth, twenty twenty one, the return in a hybrid model. Students are going to be assigned to a single cohort. And then we're going to have a transition period, transition time of over a three week period. And asynchronous Wednesdays will remain during the hybrid model. And we went over this earlier, but I do want to, you know, we went over this earlier, you know, in the year, but I do want to go over it again. We're looking at students being divided into two groups loosely by alphabet. We had to abandon our cool blue gold names because they're used in another place in the middle school, so it's A B group. A group will be students with last names beginning with A through K. And the great B group will be students with last names beginning with L through Z. There's going to be some outlier classes, that's the loosely by alphabet piece, because there are some classrooms. Where you're not going to be able to balance out and keep half the class out just strictly by alphabet, so you have to make an adjustment. And that's going to be dealt with at the building level. So. How the week looks, and if you can see my cursor here again, we had this graphic before and it really hasn't changed. You have Monday and Tuesday, the A group is in person. Then on Wednesday, they have no new instruction, remote learning and reset remediation sessions. And then the A group does complete asynchronous remote learning on Thursday and Friday. On Monday and Tuesday, the B group is asynchronous remote learning. And again, Wednesday is the reset for everyone. And then Thursday and Friday, the B group goes to in-person learning. Again, the structure of the hybrid model, we keep class sizes and building numbers low to allow for social distancing and sanitation. Groups will be divided into the two cohorts, A and B. And again, I know this is a repeat, we really want to, you know, have people understand that the group A will attend in person on Mondays and Tuesdays. Group B will attend in person on Thursdays and Fridays. Wednesdays, Wednesdays will remain a workshop slash reset day. When students are not physically present, they will remain at home online in an asynchronous setting. Timeline, we are looking at a, a three week transition period. It's going to help set everyone for success by slowly reintroducing a full in-person school day. The week of January twenty fifth, all students in grades kindergarten, one and two, report to school with their assigned cohort. The week of February first, all students in grades K through eight report to school with their assigned cohort, meaning the days that they will be in school. Then the week of February eighth, all students in grades K through, excuse me, in grades K through twelve will report to school with their assigned cohort. So you see, we slowly bring folks back to the buildings in the hybrid model. Again, workshop Wednesdays are going to continue for actually two reasons. One, to have a reset and balance for the hybrid learning, also to, to, for, to allow for a one day of, of a very deep clean. We're going to be deep cleaning daily, but a deep clean for safety and sanitation. And also for, to have, to have, let the teachers have more time to play with their colleagues. To, just to reiterate, asynchronous learning is when content's posted for students with no live interaction from a teacher. During hybrid learning, students will have two days of in-person learning and two days of asynchronous learning. Again, group A students will attend in person on Mondays and Tuesdays and can complete their assignments asynchronously on Thursdays and Fridays. Group B students attend in person Thursdays and Fridays and complete their assignments asynchronously on Mondays and Tuesdays. Again, I, I want to reiterate that, you know, asynchronous does take many forms. Readings, short and extended answer questions, essay writing, research projects, pre-recorded videos by the teacher. Online discussion boards, collaborative projects between students, study guides, lectures, reviews, and a lot more. The Equity Task Force continues to meet and, and we discussed the hybrid model last Thursday in the return to school. We believe this model offers predictability to parents and still offers our students the opportunity for in-person learning. Our most vulnerable populations will also be supported. Low incident special educations are actually going to start tomorrow. We had them in, as you may recall, before the Board of Health's stay at home. The hybrid model allows for in-person check-in for vulnerable populations. And we're going to continue to support families and students through family engagement. This also offer, offers us some time for professional development for the staff. Mr. Sluka, you want to go over your safety measures?
Absolutely. As previously stated, we actually have installed thermal imagers in all of our school buildings. And they will, each student will be required to pass through the imager to record their temperature. It should take like a second or two, we will have people monitoring the temperature taking. The student will not be able to or no, anyone else will be able to see that temperature, it'll be by the monitor off. Away from them, if a student registers above one hundred point six and they will have a second scan. With the touchless thermometer as a double check, and if that still is registering high, we will ask, have them report to the quarantine room, which is. Most buildings, it's right next door and for the parent to come and get that student. We just, we were having some issues with the calibration. Mrs. Bailey's staff, mostly Mr. Sobosinski, has hardwired these imagers into our. System, so they can now remote calibrate these imagers as we go. Versus having to come to the district and double check and then call it in. So now we can have them, if we have issues with these thermal imagers. We will have them remote in and make sure that they are up to date calibration and registering close to the inaccurate temperature. And those are in all the buildings and we're requiring everyone that enters our buildings to go through the thermal imager. If you are a staff member or visitor, you come in and you sign in with your temperature, not the students, but the staff and visitors. Next screen, Mr. Hanky. Ionization, I sent you in my weekend update, the status of the ionization, middle school system is in place. We ionized the areas that have units on them, especially the cafeteria and band rooms. But for the rest of the building, we did a whole building airflow system to ensure that airflow moves throughout the building. We have also, during that airflow, have tested for particles, there's, we have a handheld tester and we had the company come in. And for in the basement, for the special needs students in one of our classrooms, we put units into the unit vents. And we tested that while we were down there and that was working. So for the special needs students that are in the basement where airflow might not move as much, we have individual units in the unit vents down there. And the rest of the building has whole building airflow. For the remainder of our school buildings, the different percentages, we are highly confident that everything will be in place by February first. The issue was, is the manufacturer and getting us the materials to complete this project in the past. But I'd been assured, I've been assured before by Gardner that everything should be in place by February first. But a lot of the buildings are anywhere from thirty to eighty percent complete. So we are still having ionization in those buildings, just not to the full capacity that we wanted. There has been talk that these do not work, but we have been assured with some data by Gardner that. These ionization units do kill the COVID and also any other bacterial matter that could be flowing through our buildings. So those should be in place as we go through and. And ready to go by February first, which is a good thing. We actually just had a meeting today with Mr. Hanky, Mr. Patton, and Doug Dillon. We are going to, before we start the hybrid, again, we are going to be walking the buildings. At the end of this week to ensure everything is in place of what we talked about previously. Plexiglas has been put up to protect our employees at the, at their desks and anywhere else that there may be traffic. And. And we're going to go through and look at classrooms, finally look at classrooms and class sizes to ensure the safe distancing. In accordance with what we're hearing lately from CDC. As we said before, the quarantine rooms have been established. We're going to walk through again, but I know that the principal's been working on traffic safety. Signage is already in the building and ready to go, whether it's on the walls where you maintain six feet apart in standing. And waiting to move along between classrooms versus the one-way staircases versus the do not enter or some of the other safety issues that we identified. some of the other safety, uh, issues that we, uh, identified. So the signage is there, including on the outside sidewalks where there's painted, um, social distancing where you need to stand and wait to get in the building. Uh, sanitation, all classrooms will be sprayed down, um, daily. We're, we're doing that right now. We have two types of sprayers. We have the electrostatic and the battery pump. Each building has an electrostatic sprayer and each building has battery pump sprayers depending on what we need. Um, we're working on a cleaning plan, uh, during the day of making sure the high-touch areas such as bathrooms and anywhere else are being cleaned daily. Um, and then we're working on a plan to, for high school, middle school, where teachers just have to spray down a desk and, and have the student wipe it as they leave. So we just need to put that in place. The issue that we're having right now is finding people that'll be day housekeepers to walk around. Um, right now, I think that's going to have to fall back on the custodians. Um, but we're still, uh, working on that, uh, idea of trying to get daytime. We, we hired a person and they subsequently quit, found a better job. It's just hard to find part-time people right now to, to do that job, but that's not to say that Mr. Patton is working diligently to try to, to get those, uh, spots filled.
I appreciate it. Um, as Mr. Sluka stated, our next steps are to have a building walkthrough. Uh, uh, for each building, we're going to be doing that Thursday and Friday to go over, uh, you know, the various plans, uh, in terms of entrances, exits, uh, lunches, uh, bus, uh, car riders, dismissals and, and, and various things to make sure the buildings have a, a solid plan. Uh, the COVID task force is going to meet again Thursday. Uh, as well as we will be doing a town hall for parents and families on Thursday at six PM.
Mr. Hanky, if you don't mind, I, I, I did forget a few things. Can I jump in here quick? I know that it may be watching. Just some of the other items that, uh, Mr. Anki has talked about, we are working on ensuring, um, the food service operation. What's that going to look like in each building? And we're working on a final plan, excuse me, and then for transportation, um, we're finalizing the bus routes again and the safety on the buses versus, um, only twenty-seven to a bus, one per row, aisle window, alternate seating. So, um, which is going to cause us to have to consolidate some bus routes and, and once again push us out to the two-mile limit. Um, we will be contacting those that are at two miles an hour. We will also be contacting those that are at a mile and a half to two miles and letting them know that for this year only that they, we will not be able to provide that bus service. And then once we get back to normal next year, we're hoping to, uh, be able to go back to that and, uh, have full buses where we can offer that service again.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Sluka. Um, as I said, we're going to be doing building walkthroughs again, uh, to ensure that all the plans are in place, uh, Thursday and Friday this week. COVID task force continues to meet. Uh, they met last, uh, Thursday and we went over, uh, um, all of these logistics that ended up in this presentation, including more. Uh, we're going to be having a town hall, uh, with myself, uh, Mrs. Rysland is going to be on it. Uh, I believe Mrs. Pillets, Mr. Patton. And I may, I may have forgotten to include Al, but Al, if you're available, you can, please be on it. Uh, that was my fault. Um, I want to really emphasize a couple of things about this. There could be a hard stop put to this for a number of reasons. One would be if we have an infection issue that, that, that affects a number of staff. Either, so we can't staff a building. That has happened in other districts. Uh, we believe we have the technology as we have demonstrated to pivot out uh, of the, of, of, of the hybrid model and back into a full remote model. Today, uh, and we worked to get this done, the Bulldog Digital Academy is opening enrollment and it is on the website today. Uh, so if you are interested in the Bulldog Digital Academy, because you don't feel comfortable sending your child to school in person for the hybrid, uh, please indicate as such. That could also lead, um, quite frankly, to a hard stop. If we get, you know, a hundred folks that want to opt out of in-person education, it's going to be very, very difficult for us to staff, um, the digital academy for that switch. So we would have to, we would have to come back and say, we, we, we are going to stay remote. Um, so that, and I think that's going to be an indicator. It is an unknown. Uh, but as we progress through this week, we will see how many folks do want, do want to send their, their child to the Bulldog Digital Academy. Uh, that registration is open from now until Friday. It is up on our website. And, and also, obviously, we will be listening to, uh, recommendations, um, from local health authorities and we collaborate very heavily with other school districts, especially the ones that uh, surround us and are adjacent to us in terms of their plans. Um, Mrs. Daniels, that, that is the end of, uh, my presentation. I'd be happy to take all questions.
I would like to, um, extend questions to Ms. Kitson first, since she needs to leave a little early.
I appreciate that. Thank you, Ms. Daniels. Um, I am very concerned as a healthcare professional that I was trying to sign my mom up for the vaccine and I, she's eighty-seven and on the list I looked at, it said the vaccine wouldn't be available to her till the end of February. And I'm concerned about our teaching staff, um, not that they're eighty-seven, that they're ex, that they're exposing themselves every day. Without the vaccine and this is not my decision. I was told that earlier in, in the year that the decision as far as hybrid in person, et cetera, is, um, an administrative decision and, and it's nothing that the board votes on. But I did want to express my concern that we do not have a vaccine available for our staff. And also I am expressing my concern still that winter athletics is meeting. Um, we look at the Cleveland Browns and all the issues they had where they were, they had the opportunity to have testing. And there was a lot of, um, COVID exposure, um, that was identified. And we don't have the opportunity to test our athletes and I am so concerned that people are getting sick and people are dying and I am torn because I understand the importance of education. But the health and safety and the lives of our staff is concerning, is first concern and also our teachers are professional. I think they can get, I, I think they can, they've been working on, on remote learning and I, I'm just needed to express my concern and I hope that this is, um, discussed at the next COVID task force meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other, um, questions for, um, Mr. Hanky? I know, I know I, um, do have just a, a basic. I guess not a basic question because I, maybe, me having children in the district and just really, um, the barriers of trying to get them educated, I, I, I literally, it's a day-by-day thing. Some days I'm comfortable, some days I am not. But what I do want to know is, um, just based upon, um, is the basis of our decision um, to return now and what are the benefits, um, of us getting the kids back into the building now that is significant enough for us to take this risk? So I just kind of need to understand what are we basing this move on and as, you know, to come back in and, um, what are the benefits of us getting the students in back into the building that, um, that justifies us taking this?
Sure, um, I, I appreciate that question. I, um, I, I believe, well, the, the first, you know, and again, you don't go by what everybody else is doing, but you want to see what other districts are doing and opportunities that other kids have had. Uh, among the first ring districts, uh, most, if not all, are planning on a return in some fashion by the end of the month. So for me, that, quite frankly, kind of be a bit of an equity issue in terms of like, I, I like, I would like our kids to have the same opportunities as, as the surrounding areas. Uh, secondly, I believe that the hybrid model generally with the lower amount of kids in the building, uh, presents an opportunity to have education in person safely. Uh, and I think, yes, a, a, any, any, any sort of interaction, uh, with, you know, in the, you know, in the pandemic era. That's basically what we're in now as an era, um, uh, i- i- is a risk. Uh, I believe we've, we have a good plan to mitigate risk, um, through our various safety measures and social distancing. Um, I think that, uh, it's worth it because our children have not had in-person education since last March. Uh, and have not had an opportunity. That does not mean that we will not stop if there is a safety issue. Uh, if we have a safety issue, then we will have to stop, uh, if we determine that, you know, there's a, a high level of, of staff absenteeism due to quarantine. Um, or, or, or an issue of, of, of a large exposure, uh, which other districts have seen and adjusted accordingly. Uh, this district stayed very, we've stayed very consistent staying out of school, um, uh, during the balance of the pandemic. Um, is, if you have, I mean, other districts have jumped in and out and things of that nature. At this point, uh, I believe that, uh, um, it, it is a calculated risk to have our, have an opportunity to have our children, uh, experience in, in-person education at this point. I believe we can protect our staff, uh, and, and our, our, our children as, as they come into schools. Uh, the governor's office has reiterated, uh, that there's not a lot of, uh, exposures happening at schools. It has happened. They have had issues in other districts, uh, that, 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 where they have traced it back to schools, but generally these, the, the infections seem to come from the outside uh, in. There are a lot of unknowns, Mrs. Daniels, uh, in terms of, we have not, we have not done this. In terms of like, the way it's going to flow, we will always err on the side of caution. Um, I want, I, I would rather take way more time getting the children in through the thermal imagers and getting them appropriately put into the classroom, uh, rather than, you know, think, things like that. We're going to have to teach everyone, you know, um, quite honestly, I mean, everybody's going to be excited, I think, to come back, but we have to teach them, you know, various different rules through our PBIS program. Uh, you know, uh, appropriate mask wearing, um, hand washing, sanitation. Um, and those are going to be, uh, efforts that actually Mr. Patton is spearheading, uh, in terms of, uh, uh, PBIS. Uh, and how we look at this in a positive way. Um, I, I, I truly believe that, um, uh, given all, all of the data I've looked at, um, i- i- it's, I, I believe it's a risk worth taking.
Thank you. And I do know one thing, students, it's a little different coming back now than back in March or April. It has practiced in safety and mask wearing has been a lifestyle for everyone for such a long period. And I know the kids are, are adjusting, um, and pretty much do a good job with, um, developing those skills now, because I did have three children that came back into the building, even preschoolers. And they were able to keep their mask on for the few hours a day that they were, um, in-person, um, learning. Do anyone have any other questions for Mr. Hanky as it relates to?
I do have a couple of questions. Um, pre-K was not addressed. Are the pre-K students also going to be transitioning back?
Certainly, actually, they're, they're, Ms. King, I apologize because the, the pre-K is, is a different type of program. They're actually transitioning back this week, Mr. Patton. Pat may actually have more information. I just want to make sure I didn't speak out of turn here. Because they have, they, and they have been in before when we had our, our, yeah.
Yeah, so our preschools are integrated with, uh, typical peers as well as students with special needs. So we just, uh, when we say we're, generally when we talk to about bringing our special needs students back, the preschool is already part of that, usually of that group, so was not.
Okay, part of that cohort, okay.
Yes.
Um, another question, I just want to, um, clarify, we talked about adjustments um, with the A, B and the, and the A and B group, um, based on the number of students per alphabet. Will there also be, um, adjustments made for families who may have different last names so that when they're coming in on the bus, they're riding with their family and it also gives a little more structure for the family in terms of the days that their students will be, um, in school versus being at home, um,
I apologize, I didn't mean to cut you off. Go ahead. Sometimes this zoom, I, um, the, uh, the, uh, the short answer is yes, Ms. King. The lengthier answer is it's going to be worked out for building, uh, and by teacher, if that makes some sense. Um, quite honestly, you know, there, there, there's going to be, I, we're not, well, there's going to be hiccups as, as we move forward in terms of scheduling and things like that, but what we really want to avoid though is where you have a classroom, say you have A through K and then L through Z, you have like ten or twenty eighth through K, you know, K kids here, I mean, like ten, so you want to balance that that way. We will deal with individual families a- a- as we, as we, uh, uh, move forward.
Can I just jump in there, Mr. Hanky?
Go ahead.
Ms. King, they are, the groups are already done and the teachers will notify those particular families if they're, they may have to make the adjustments on there. So yes, we're aware of it, yes.
Yeah, I wanted to, I wanted to just make sure that that was clear for anyone that's watching, um, so that they can have a little, uh, I guess, a little ease knowing that they can, even though they may have children with different last names, that they could.
Yes, so. So the district does, uh, a, a program called product, progress book and progress book allows us to family group families. So even though they have a different last name, we're able to make that adjustment and then we will make those adjustments on our end so that the students in each family group are go attending the same days.
Okay, um, is there going to be a cap on the Bulldog Digital Academy in terms of enrollment?
So, Ms. King, quite, quite, and, and again, I, 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 I kind of want to just reiterate this. There could be some reasons that we stop and we stay in remote, okay? If we have, we don't, the, the short answer is we don't have a cap. But if we have, you know, say a hundred families indicating that they want to jump into the digital academy, that kind of indicates to me, A, that maybe we're moving too quickly. And B, we have a major staffing issue if we, if we tried to switch that right here, right now in the middle. And I, and I, again, I, Mr. Patton always says this and I love it, it's patience, creativity and flexibility, right? So if we have to pivot and we cannot come back on the twenty-fifth, we will make that decision as quickly as possible. We'd like to see the data, uh, throughout the week as the Bulldog Digital Academy enrollment is. I will tell all the families watching, if, 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 if it's too large, we'll, we'll tell you to stay out of the digital academy because we're going to remain remote learning. We will make that decision as quickly as possible. Um, I do want to say, I understand that there's a lot of anxiety surrounding this and, and, and I, and I, I do, I do get that, but, um, you know, I, I think that, um, it, it is time to, for us to, um, um, return to some in-person learning, but we will also take the community's, communities, uh, um, uh, opinions and recommendations into account, both by that data from the digital academy and on Thursday at our town hall. Does that make some sense, Ms. King?
Yes, um, and then my last question is, can you give us an update? I know that, um, Ms. Kitson talked about the, our co-curricular activities. How's that been going? Because I believe that, um, competitions started. How's it going with the testing, not testing, but the, um, the scans of temperatures and, you know, our little, our checklist and all of that. How's things been going so far?
All of that's been in place. Um, generally, we haven't had, um, a, a positive, uh, reported to us. I'm going to defer again to Mr. Patton because he is my point man on re- reporting of positive cases. And I, I just don't want to speak out of school, but I believe we have not any reported from the athletic or co-curricular side.
We have not, we continue to, um, as students are coming into their activity, uh, coaches, assistant coaches are checking temperatures. Um, we've heard cases that students have been sent home and not able to participate. Uh, if their temperature was, uh, above, but their exposure rate and, and testing positive, we've not heard anything the last, uh, since they've been practicing and I think that goes back through December up to this point. Um, and then I was able to attend the boys' basketball game, uh, Friday evening. Uh, we had two buses for the boys. They were able to, uh, socially distance, even during the, uh, visiting team had, uh, seats, uh, spread out for our students, um, and, uh, you know, everybody is in the same boat. I think that as we progress forward through this process, um, we are developing and learning different systems and emulating those as we go. And again, we continue to follow through with the protocols of mask wearing, social distancing, washing hands. Um, and we continue to keep practicing. And we continue to keep practicing, do, do those practices as much as possible.
I, I would like to also say, and I know I, I, I did tell the board this. I understand that families may not be too happy, but we are staying fanless. Here's the reason. I want our kids to have the opportunity to play. And I believe that that's, that it is erring on the side of caution. But we are going to remain fanless for the time being. We do have, and we, we, we will make sure in our first home game, we, we have a live, a good live streaming camera for the competitions set up in our gymnasium. You know, and, and, and we should be able to have that opportunity for folks. It, you know, we're going to monitor infection rates and if they come down a little bit, obviously, you know, the more visitors you have in a building, right? That, 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 that's, that's a risk. And so that's why we want to remain fanless right now. That could change before the season's over. But I, I, I would personally like to see a little bit of drop in, in, in terms of the, the community piece, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have we, are we, now we do have a COVID dashboard on our website that the community and families can monitor the cases, right?
Yes. Yes. And also in addition, Ms. Daniels, we will be doing some more robust reporting when we come back in hybrid model. So for example, if there is a, a student that tests positive, say at the high school, all high school families will receive an email to that effect. If, if students are close contacts within six feet, we will be sending a separate communication to those folks. And also we will be determining with the board of health, what types of quarantine procedures would have to happen.
And is this some of the things that you'll kind of be going over during the town hall this Thursday? With the families in place, you know, my position on this, I really would like to see what the families say because we are an institution of education. And so if attendance and families are not going to participate and bring their children, and we know that remotely, we are, we have more access to more students to make sure that they're educated. And, you know, I guess that's where it really lies on, will our families trust that it's safe enough to bring their students to school regularly? So there's no disruption in their education. And although hybrid and virtual is not the ideal environment, at least we know that we are able to give access to education to a body of students regularly. We've kind of got that down pat. So my only concern, I really want to know, though people bring their children back to school, the teacher and staff health and safety is very much a priority. And it is to be considered, but we are an institution of education and just like other industries that's had to go back to work. You just have to make sure that your staff is safest. But the biggest thing is making sure that the students will come if we open up the doors and families feel safe enough returning them. And we don't have a new gap of those who are coming, those who are not. And now we are not getting education to everyone. At least now we know that we are getting education to everyone. It may not be in-person or the ideal, but at least we are having an opportunity to educate all students at this point, for the most part. So I, it just, I, I really, I know we're opening up the Bulldog Academy, but is there any surveys one out to the parents or just really directly reaching out to say, are you bringing them back? Do you plan to bring them back? And that really would determine how we move forward as a district because if people don't bring them back and then attendance become an issue, you know, I guess, I guess that's the, that's the biggest thing.
So we just completed a student survey. We'll, we'll share some of that, that data out on Thursday. Mrs. Rysland's correlating that and Mr. Mr. Patton, I, I, I don't like to talk out of school, but I believe we were looking at a parent survey, correct? Or no?
No, not yet. Okay.
You know what?
Just seeing Bulldog Academy numbers, it kind of gives us that determination.
Yeah, that's what we were looking at first, was the Bulldog Academy first.
That's what I thought. Yeah. Well, yeah, I mean, and, and that's the thing, Mrs. Daniels, there will be a hard stop to this and, and it'll be a good indicator. You know, if we, if we have a lot of folks jumping into the Bulldog Academy, I will have to pivot. One of the things I have learned here during COVID is that sometimes you make a decision and you have to turn around and do something different. And, and that's just how things are. We, we are in a, a, you know, we, everybody says unprecedented time. It certainly is. And so we're going to have to look at that.
When will we be closing that Bulldog Academy registration so that we have, so did you guys have enough time to plan? Like is it this week to plan and what the numbers look like? So that we can most definitely know what our families, and I guess none of this will impact our low incidence students coming back.
No, no, and, 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 and quite frankly, I think that the low incidence, if we if we, if we can help it and we can staff it and we can do it safely, we need to continue on with that. Also, the digital academy is open from today till Friday to opt in. So by Thursday, we should have a pretty good idea of where, 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 where the lay of the land is, Mrs. Daniels. Does that make sense?
Okay.
Yes. And then we can move forward. And I think I would like to say that too. This is, this is all of our school district, right? It's our parents' school district. It's Garfield Heights City Schools. So I mean, we, we do, I, 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 I believe, I believe at least personally, we do absolutely have to be mindful of, of, of the comfort level of our parents in terms of where things lie.
Thank you. Any more questions? Okay. With no more questions, thank you, Mr. Hanky, for the presentation.
Certainly.
If anybody is watching and have any questions as it relates to the presentation, I guess the best thing is to maybe kind of wait until the town hall. That's an opportunity for parents and families and community members to get their questions asked directly. And then from the town hall meeting, it will give you instructions on where to ask other questions. So I thank you guys for making this presentation to give us an opportunity to kind of digest things prior to the town hall.
Mrs. Daniels, one, one quick note. On the Bulldog Digital Academy thing, we only need new families to sign up. So if you're already in, you can be in. Okay. So please, only, only if you're looking to move from the traditional setting to the digital academy setting, please.
And I guess our assumption is people are going to opt into Bulldog Academy. But what instructions are there for families who may want to opt out of Bulldog Academy and actually put their children into in-person? Is that an option for families?
Yes, yes it is. They just have to contact Mrs. Morris and, and, and she'll facilitate from there because she'll make sure that she knows exactly which homeschool it is, et cetera. Yep.
Okay. Thank you. Cause I guess where we have, you know, one, our such, we're assuming that people are going to be opting into, but there may be families that want to go onto in-person. So just want to kind of, you don't know how the community is going to flow at this time. So we want to make sure that everyone be able to make the, a fair have access to make the decisions for what's best for their children.
And, and that's already was done a, a month ago, Mrs. Daniels. So we've already started reaching out to those families and, and, and reaching out to see if they want to come back into in-person learning. So that process has already started and has been, has been done over a month ago.
Okay. Thank you. And if families change their minds, they're still able to kind of communicate. You guys have been very flexible on a case by case. You know, with, with this, as much as you guys can.
We've been trying to hold you, you know, a semester commitment, but always if there are extraordinary circumstances, I, I encourage families to contact building principal, Mrs. Morris or myself.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Hanky. The next item on our agenda is board committees. And we did want to discuss the reconfiguration of the district boards committee to make them more actionable and to align with us moving forward with a strategic plan. But my recommendation actually is that we table this discussion today in that we don't have Ms. Kitson available and we only have three of our five board members. And I do believe we will be, we can put this, we can, on our next work, we can maybe call in other works whenever. I think whenever we have our final discussion on the strategic plan, we can possibly put this on our agenda to kind of marry the two and get this intact if, if everyone's okay with that. I just, we only have three board members present and I don't think we can have a fair discussion as it relates to completely restructuring one of our board norms.
Mrs. Daniels, do you mind if I hop in real quick? Yeah, I, I would, I, I would, on all coordinate with Mrs. Daniels to get the information out to the board of education, but the strategic plan is, is moving forward and I'd like to have another work session, quite frankly, this month. Probably after the regular board meeting and we could, we could probably roll both of those things into there, if that makes some sense to the board.
That makes sense to me. There's no objection with us. Tablely, that board committee discussion today, I will move forward to the tentative agenda review. Do, this is, do anyone have any questions or is there any information that Mr. Hanky would like to share with the board as it relates to any items on our January twenty-fourth regular board member meeting agenda? I mean, it's actually, sorry, January nineteenth.
Yeah, excuse me, ju- just to the, a board of education. Pretty, you know, I, I, I looked over the agenda, pretty, you know, normal kind of agenda. Nothing out of the ordinary that I've seen, so.
Mr. Hanky, do you want to talk about real quick, having an executive session?
Yes, excuse me, Mrs. Daniels. We would like to, if you could work with Mr. Saluka, we would like to have an executive session for the, for the purpose of discussing negotiations added on to the January nineteenth agenda.
Give the board an update, yes.
Yes. Thank you.
I don't oppose to you adding that to the, to that agenda. Any other discussion? I'm like trying to flow through, I'm trying to figure out this board doc, you guys.
Yeah, it's a thing. It's a thing to try and figure out. I'm over here like.
Actually, just for the general public, Mrs. Daniels, they may not know. The system with it we just are moving to is called Board Docs. It, it will, and my apologies, but it will allow the, the general public to follow along electronically. We will make sure that that is happening the next time. But we are, we need a little grace. We're all learning too. Thank you.
Yes. I think we did pretty good today for it to be our first go around and no Sherry. Sherry would be proud of us today. Fury guided us through this. She has trained us well. We must definitely miss her today, but we did a really good job. So if there's not anything else, I would like to make a motion to adjourn the work session at one twenty-two. Can I get a second? Roll call.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. King?
Yes.
Mrs. Daniels?
Yes. With that vote, meeting is adjourned at one twenty-three.
Congratulations.